I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Water and Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, September twelfth today, two thousand twenty-three to order. I'd like to have approval of the agendas and next on the item here. There was a motion made. Cody, do you want to make that motion?
Uh, yes, Lystico. I'll make the motion to combine the last three items on the agenda. That would be items C, one, two, and three, since they're all at the same address here, same item.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, so that's approval of the agenda. Can we have a motion for approval of the minutes for a regular meeting from August eighth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved. Lystico.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion changes? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed saying aye. Want some passes? Financial report, um, for, is it, uh, missed that one there? Yes. Was it for July? The July correct? Should be financial report for July. This is Schrader with staff. I'm just looking at this now. So, but July is our first month, so everything's generally be pretty low. Percentages on the revenue side, um, five percent, eight percent, three percent. That's online considering we're only one month into this year. And on the expense side, ten percent, sixteen percent, something better than that, or is it ten percent? On the expense side, certain expenses, um, get paid out on an annual basis. Ask you that, but no concerns on the financial report at this point. Any questions for staff? Can I have a motion to approve and place on file the financial report for July? So moved. Do not. Any more than second to that motion?
Second. Ewing.
Any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, um, this part portion of the agenda is allocated for non-agenda items for oral presentations, either on the phone, online, or in chambers. If you have an item you wish to speak of, please state your name and your address and, uh, come to the podium if you're here in the chambers. Is there anyone wishing to speak on a non-agenda item at this time? Online, is there anyone? Or on the phone? It appears not. So we'll move on to.
This is Schrader. This is Schrader with staff. I did receive a note from Noel that there might be some audio problems with those online. We'll go check with that and we'll see if anyone.
Should we hold up until then or proceed?
We can, we can come back and visit if we need to. I mean, we typically don't have, okay, non-agenda presentations.
Well, uh, we'll do this. Once we confirm whether or not there's, if there is a problem, you know, you got it fixed, um, we'll come back and ask that question again. Uh, so we'll just delay that agenda item to the very end, uh, after we've confirmed. The next one is new business and it's, uh, the first item of business is a staff report for the request by M and B Legacy for a site plan amendment for a five thousand. Apologize. I apologize. Yep. The time is, uh, five oh six P M, four oh six P M. And a hea- hearing is now scheduled at this time. It's a request by the M and MB Legacy for a site plan amendment for a five thousand nine hundred and ninety square foot truck maintenance and office building in the M two P Plan Industrial District located southeast of twenty-four, twenty-five G T Drive. It's on pages twelve to twenty-four of the planning and zoning commission packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Emily Saliga stating, I, Emily Saliga, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Could we have a motion?
So moved. Lystico.
Second?
Second. Do not.
All those opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come forward after the staff has provided the report and identify yourself by name and address.
This is Schneider with staff. The request will not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area as the area is composed of similar industrial and commercial uses. The request will not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic movements in the area. The area is served by G T Drive, which is classified as a local street. The site in question is Zoned M two P Plan Industrial District and has been zoned as such since it was rezoned from A one Agricultural District on October ninth, nineteen ninety-five. The surrounding property zoning and their uses are as follows. To the north is a warehouse. Zoned M two P Plan Industrial District. To the east is vacant lands on M two P Plan Industrial District. To the south is M L K Junior Drive and vacant lands on M two P Plan Industrial District. And to the west is a warehouse on M two P Plan Industrial District. The proposed request requires stormwater management. The applicant, the applicant will need to submit a full site plan showing onsite detention to the engineering department. The applicant is proposing two twenty-foot overhead doors. On the north end of the building, there will be a one thousand and forty square foot office attached to the four thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot shop. A four thousand one hundred and thirty-four square foot gravel area is proposed to the south of the building for trailer parking. The building is proposed to have a brown steel facade with a three-foot dark brown steel wings coating and a steel roof. Four windows are proposed for the office portion of the structure. The zoning ordinance requires one parking space for each two hundred and fifty square feet of office floor area and one space for each two persons employed on the maximum shift. The building has approximately one thousand and forty square feet of office space, which requires five parking spaces. Depending on how many employees will be employed on the maximum shift, one or more additional parking spaces will be required. The site plan shows three parking spaces total with one eighty-eight accessible stall. At tech review, Alheim and Welliver noted the, the building will need a two-hour firewall between the office and shop to avoid needing sprinklers. Welliver stated the site will need aerial access if the building is over thirty feet in height. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by M and MB Legacy for a site plan amendment for a five thousand nine hundred and ninety square foot commercial building in the M two P Plan Industrial District located southeast of twenty-four, twenty-five G T Drive. Be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. For this area, the request will not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area as the area is composed of industrial uses. The request will not appear to be compat- would appear to be compatible with the surrounding industrial development and subject to the following condition. The final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, screening, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions by staff?
Yeah.
Yes, I have a question. This is Do Not. What is a two-hour firewall? Can you explain that?
This is Schrader with staff. Um, there's not a representative of the building department here, but, uh, where there's some echo in there, but, um, buildings that require a firewall, there are different levels of firewall, one-hour, two-hour firewall. It's a rating at which, it's designed to hold back if there's a fire in one component of a building, how long it should be able to hold back the fire before it would reach the other. So it's just a rating. There's different, um, designs of how you build that wall to maintain that rating level.
In my understanding, the process is, is that that's something that the building department and plan review in the building code, plan review department would review and approve. It doesn't fall under the jurisdiction of Planning and Zoning Commission. They still have to meet the building code requirements.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anybody, um, in the chambers or online? Who would like to speak to the issue? Speak to this particular issue? If so, please state your name and address. Here's nobody is here to, to speak on the issue. Uh, can we motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Ewing.
Second. Lystico.
Any further discussion or questions? Regarding the hearing? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is.
Hearing's closed.
Hearing's closed. Yep. We already did the discussion motion and voted. For closing the hearing, yes. I'm sorry. Yes. So now we're gonna, um, uh, need a motion to approve the request.
So moved. Ewing.
Second, Schaefer.
Can you amend that to include the specific, the staff recommendation?
First staff recommendation.
Conditions.
Amended motion, uh, to approve, um, regard, um, considering the staff recommendation.
There, yeah.
Schaefer with the second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is five fourteen P M and a hearing is scheduled at this time. There's a request by D L G Investments for a site plan amendment for a employee parking lot in the M two P Plan Industrial District located east of two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine G T Drive. It's on pages twenty-five through thirty-three of the commission packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Emily Saliga stating, I, Emily Saliga, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo, and the site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Could we have a motion to receive and place this on file?
So moved. Do not.
Second, Ewing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? For those of you who wish to speak or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and inter- identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. And staff report?
This is Schneider with staff. The applicant is requesting to construct a forty-stall parking lot for the existing business gray transportation east of twenty-four fifty-nine G T Drive. The request would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area as the area is composed of industrial uses. Rider Logistics located to the east of the property has a large employee parking lot to the west of their building. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic movements in the area. The parking will be for employee vehicles, not semi-parking. The site will be accessed by G T Drive, which is classified as a local street. The site in question is Zoned M two P Plan Industrial District and has been zoned as such since it was rezoned from A one Agricultural District on October ninth, nineteen ninety-five. The surrounding property zoning and their uses are as follows. To the north is A B C Supply Company's on M two P Plan Industrial District. To the east is Control Zoned M two P Plan Industrial District. To the south is a warehouse on M two P Plan Industrial District and to the west is Gray Transportation Zone M two P Plan Industrial District. The forty-stall parking lot will provide additional parking for gray transportation. Employees currently park in the lot to the south of their building and use the area to the northeast of the building, which is not paved. The new parking lot will be asphalt. The existing site meets the zoning ordinance requirements for parking regulations by providing approximately thirty-eight parking spaces. The business is in need of more employee parking as the business has grown. The site plan shows a twenty-foot setback from all property lines for the parking area. At tech review, Knutson noted the engineering department will need a full site plan showing drainage areas. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by D L G Investments LLC for a site plan amendment for an employee parking lot in the M two P Plan Industrial District located east of twenty-four fifty-nine G T Drive be approved for the following reasons. The request will not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area as the parking is only for employees, not truck traffic. The request would appear to be compatible with surrounding development and subject to the following conditions. That the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera.
Again, at this time, if there's anybody who wishes to speak on a specific agenda item, either online, on the phone, or in the chambers, we would ask you, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and your name and address. Would you entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Ewing.
Second. Lystico.
Any further discussion? Questions?
I have a question for staff. So this is Do Not. My question for staff i- in regards to picture number three on page twenty-eight. I just want to orientate myself. The trees referred to on the left side, they're on the left side of the picture, right? Like on the left-hand side of the picture. They're not the tall trees on the right. They're the bushy trees on the left. Yeah. And they're the, they're the shorter-looking trees.
Correct.
They're the shorter-looking trees on the left-hand side of the picture. Just wanted to orientate myself. Thank you.
All those in favor closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You entertain a motion to approve the request?
Lystico. I will make a motion to approve the request by D L G Investments LLC for a site plan amendment for an employee parking lot in the M two P Plan Industrial District located east of twenty-four fifty-nine G T Drive with the conditions that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera.
Second, Ewing.
Any questions or discussion?
Discussion item. Lystico, thank you for in the tech notes specifying that a drainage plan will need to be submitted.
Is there anybody wishing to speak on the approval of this request? The last one was the hearing. The one the same. Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The time is four twenty-one P M on September twelfth, Tuesday, two thousand twenty-three, and a hearing is scheduled at this time. It's a request by P M W Companies LLC for a site plan amendment for a commercial development, including two one hundred and thirty-eight thousand square foot buildings, one twenty thousand square foot building, and one five thousand square foot commercial building in phase one and four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of buildings in future phases in the B P Business Park District located north and east of forty-seven nineteen Ainsborough Avenue at the southeast corner of the Ainsborough Avenue and U S Highway twenty interchange. It's on pages thirty-four through forty-five of the Planning and Zoning Commission packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Emily Saliga stating, I, Emily Saliga, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved. Ewing.
Second. Lystico.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Some passes? Will have the staff give their report?
This is Dornoff with staff. Um, the applicant's requesting to construct two hundred and thirty-eight thousand square foot buildings, along with one twenty thousand square foot building and a five thousand square foot building in phase one and four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of buildings in future phases in the B P Business Park District. The site in question has been Zoned B P Business Park District since being rezoned from A one Agricultural District on February twenty-fifth, two thousand four. Surrounding properties and zoning and their uses to the north is U S Highway twenty and commercial zone B P Business Park District and are for multiple residence district. To the east is agricultural land, Zoned B P Business Park District and A one Agricultural District. To the south is agricultural district and agricultural land and West Shallows Road, Zoned A one Agricultural District. To the west is residences and agriculture, Zoned A one Agricultural District. The proposed request would require a stormwater management plan and they do show a detention basin for stormwater management. The future land use map designated this area as business park, professional offices, commercial, compatible light industrial. The proposed site plan amendment conforms with the future land use map and the kind of preemptive plan. The applicant is requesting a site plan amendment to construct a multi-phase project in the South Waterloo Business Park. Phase one includes four buildings, two of which will be one hundred and thirty-eight thousand square feet. The third building would be twenty thousand square feet and the fourth building would be five thousand square feet. Future phases include a ten thousand square foot building, two fifty-seven thousand square foot buildings, and a two hundred and ninety-six thousand square foot building and a five thousand square foot building. Parking requirements will depend on the specific uses and, um, that locate in the buildings. Therefore, the developer will need to ensure that adequate parking is designed into the development to meet the parking requirements. The property was rezoned to B P Business Park District in two thousand four. In two thou- in twenty-ten, the City of Waterloo first entered an agreement to start purchasing land over a number of years to create the business park. And the business park is now certified by the state of Iowa as a project writing industrial site. The area will be plotted in a separate future request. Engineering did note during tech review that additional right-of-way along Ainsborough Avenue and the on-ramp to U S twenty may be needed due to the possibility of having to put in a roundabout at the intersection, um, interchange betw- between U S twenty and Ainsborough Avenue, which will need, um, be worked out separately with the applicant from the site plan amendment process and outline into the development agreement. Brock from Fire noted that the size of the buildings, um, they will need, may need sprinklers and fire alarms, plus the fire department will need to look at the number and locations of fire hydrants, which we determined during the plating process. And the possible need for aerial access and possible heat vents in the building, which will all be determined when the buildings come up for building, um, review, for building permits. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by P M W Companies LLC for a site plan amendment for a new commercial industrial development, including two, three, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand square feet buildings, one twenty thousand square foot building and one five thousand square foot building in phase one and four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of buildings in future phases in the B P Business Park District located north and east of forty-seven nineteen Ainsborough Avenue at the southeast corner of Ainsborough and the U S hi- Highway twenty um, interchange be approved for the following reasons. The request being in accordance with the future land use map and, um, comprehensive plan. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area and would be compatible with surrounding development subject to the following condition, that the sign of site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, and et cetera.
This is a point in time for commissioners to ask questions to the staff. I had, I had a quick question, maybe some, some, some background. So it was talked about a roundabout at the off, at the, at the off and on ramp on the south side of Highway twenty. I know there's many times I come up off the off ramp hitting uh, eastbound on twenty to get onto Ainsborough and there's, there is traffic backed up for, for quite a ways. I know there's quite a bit of development happening on that south side of Laurel and Ainsborough, sort of a shortcut for that. So from a traffic standpoint, I'm assuming is that why this roundabout's being looked at and what in relationship to the access onto this particular site is planned for the future? Is there traffic signals, additional roundabouts?
Well, let me have Jamie ask that and answer that in a moment, but is there any other questions that we can? Before I bring him up?
Yes, Commissioner Lystico. This particular project, uh, is this gonna be used for any kind of hazardous chemicals? I mean, heavily flammable, possible pollutants, anything that would be, uh, something that would require further special details on it?
Um, that would be determined at a future time. These are spec buildings, so, um, exactly what will locate in there at this time is be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Otherwise, I'll bring up Jamie.
Thank you, John.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. Um, we have our consultant looking at what we need to do. We know that there are issues at Ainsborough and what we are proposing to the D O T, because the D O T obviously owns the ramps, we are proposing either signals or a roundabout at that intersection. The signals will work, um, for the short term. The roundabout works better for the long term. So we're working through that with the D O T. The other thing that we have to do, we know that from the ramps going south that we are going to have to add an additional turn lane on Ainsborough itself, so into the park as well as a right turn as you're heading north into the park. So we're looking at all of that. We just transmitted. We had a meeting last week with the D O T to discuss these things and we just transmitted, um, today the report for them to review and, uh, we'll see where they, where they comment on it.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for staff? For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone or identify yourself or speak up online and identify yourself by name and your address, please.
Uh, members of the commission, uh, my name is Mike McCree. Last name is M A C R I. At sixty-nine hundred West Tom Parkway in West Des Moines, Iowa. I'm a representative of P W M Companies LLC, willing and able to, uh, hopefully address any questions you may have about the project. Apologize that I was able to be there in person as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you, appreciate you volunteering to, to assist in answering questions. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this subject matter for or against?
Commissioner Lystico, uh, we did get a letter here sent from Mr. Rick Young and, uh, it shows that there's some, some sort of desire to have the sanitary sewer and other services from the city extended to both sides of Ainsborough Avenue. And now, I, I don't think that's upon the developer to bring the services to the other side, but is there any way that when this all happens that us as the city can make sure that gets done?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, we are currently looking at that. We received Mr. Young's letter earlier this week, so we will be looking that, at that and see if we can physically get it there. We aren't sure if it can be fed by gravity. Would have to be a lift station, but that's what we're going to be looking into and, and, uh, we'll be discussing that with Mr. Anderson as we move forward with this.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions? Any further, anybody else in the audience who is wishing to speak on this issue? Okay.
Phyllis Osterling, four-three-four-two, Ainsborough. So looking at the proposed lane advancement from Highway twenty ramp or future roundabout, are we looking at a, a buyout of some properties there?
I have to have this at the engineering department.
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer, no, we are with the, if we go with the roundabout option, we are not looking at needing any additional right-of-way for the homes to the south and to the west of that intersection. If we need any, we would be looking at taking it from the south and to the east from the business park itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Grady, eight-eight-seven West Shawless Road. My farm borders the south edge of it. Will you have to widen, and I, I didn't understand you're on Ainsborough. Will you, will you have bought extra land to make two more lanes? Will you put more, or put two more lanes on Ainsborough again?
Jamie Knudsen, City Engineer, we'll be adding from the ramps, the off ramps there, heading south about eight hundred feet or so. That's where we would be putting in the additional turn lanes to allow traffic to get in and out of the business park there.
Okay. Thank you.
Same name, same address. By your site plan here, you have roads that are coming from Shawless Road up to that, but that's way in the future, right? You have two of them coming in where the city owns the water, or the water company owns stuff.
This is Schrader with staff, yes, those are just future roads as hypotheticals.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else who wants to speak on this issue? It doesn't look like there's anyone else in the chambers. Anybody else want to speak on this issue online? Or on the phone? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved, Ewing.
Second, do not.
Need further discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. At this time, we'd entertain a motion to approve the request.
Commissioner Lystico, I will make the motion that the request by P M W Companies LLC for a site plan amendment for a new commercial industrial development, including two one hundred thirty-eight thousand square foot buildings, one twenty thousand square foot building, and one five thousand square foot building in Phase One, and four hundred twenty-five thousand square feet of buildings in future phases in the B P Business Park District located north and east of forty-seven nineteen Ainsborough Avenue at the southeast corner of Ainsborough Avenue and U S Highway interchange be approved with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, drainage, et cetera.
Have a second?
Second, do not.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda. It's not a hearing, so. I'll totally need to read that out, okay. The next motion, or next item on the agenda is a request by Waterloo Fiber to construct a twenty-foot by eleven-point-six-foot fiber shelter adjacent to fire station number six at thirty-two eighty-eight Ainsborough Avenue in the R three Multiple Residence District, on pages forty-six to fifty-six of the commission packet. And we'll start out with the staff report.
This is Dornoff with staff. The, the applicant's proposing to construct a shelter for equipment for the city's fiber optic network. The site is currently zoned R three Multiple Residence District and zoned since the adoption of zoning ordinance twenty-four seventy-nine in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning falls to the north residential zone R three Multiple Residence District, to the south residential zone R three Multiple Residence District, to the east residential zone R three Multiple Residence District, and to the west is Ainsborough Avenue residential and religious, and religious facilities on R three Multiple Residence District. Fire Station Six was built in nineteen ninety-six, and residences were built between nineteen sixty-eight and two thousand nine, and the religious facility was built in nineteen seventy. The applicant's requesting install a twenty-by-eleven-point-five-two-hundred-and-thirty-two-square-foot shelter on the property of Fire Station Six for equipment for the new city fiber network. The shelter is a prefab building and will look similar to the data center buildings were installed on the corner of Commercial Streets and Fifth, and Fifteenth Streets. Since the building will be unmanned except for maintenance, there will be no parking requirements. On the building would construct north and east of the existing fire station, just east of the existing parking area for the station. While there is residences to the north, the proposed building will be predominantly buffered from view by the resident, from the residences by garages that sit between the residences and the proposed shelter. The shelter will also use the existing that emergency generator of the fire station, so they will not be bringing an additional shelter. Or therefore, staff recommends a request by Waterloo Fiber to construct a twenty-by-eleven-point-five-two-hundred-and-thirty-two-square-foot fiber shelter adjacent to Fire Station number six at thirty-two eighty-eight Ainsborough Avenue be approved for the following, be approved for the following reasons. It would appear the special program would not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. The request is located within the primary growth area and served by existing utilities. And the request is confirmed with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area. Subject to final condition, the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions for staff? Is, I do have a quick question. Is this going to be a moved-in portable type structure that's permanently anchored? Is that what they're proposing?
Correct.
And that meets current city codes?
Yep.
It'll be something very similar to the structure shown on page fifty-one, which is a shelter building for a similar type use that was approved and installed at the corner of Commercial and West Fifteenth Street.
Thank you. Is there any, anybody in the audience or online or on the phone that wishes to speak for or against this agenda item? Or speak to it? Please state your name.
I'm Eric Loggi with Waterloo Fiber. If there is any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Loggi. Appreciate volunteer. Is there anybody else online? Or on the phone that wishes to speak to this item? If not, entertain a motion for the request.
Well, I could take a stab at, a stab at it. This is Ewing. I make a motion that the request by Waterloo Fiber to construct the twenty-foot by eleven-point-five-foot, what would be a two-hundred-and-thirty-two-square-foot fiber shelter adjacent to Fire Station number six at thirty-two eighty-eight Ainsborough Avenue in the R three Multiple Residence District be approved, subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meet all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Second, Lystico. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The next item, we've combined items C one through three on vacate and dedicates. And so we'll have the staff report, review all three, and then we'll follow the same process.
Okay, yeah, this is Hiberger with the staff report. We've got a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate Limbud Lane right-of-way in the R three Multiple Residence District located at east of twelve thirty-nine Sheldon Street at Becker Elementary School. The city of Waterloo is the applicant. We have a request by the city of Waverly to vacate Limbud Lane right-of-way at east of twelve thirty-nine Sheldon Street. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular traffic in the area as the area's vacate appears to have minimal use of city right-of-way. There are sidewalks along Sheldon Street, Downing Avenue, Sager Avenue, and there are no sidewalks along Limbud Lane. The University Avenue Trail is located three blocks to the east of the project area. The site is zoned R three Multiple Residence District. Under the, to the north, southeast, and west, residents are zoned R two one-to-family Residence District, and to the east is residences zoned R three Multiple Residence District and R two one-to-family Residence District. The request would not require any buffering by ordinance standards. The proposed vacate area would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage. The area is composed of single-family multifamily residences primarily constructed between nineteen fifties and nineteen eighties. No portion of the vacate area is located in the floodplain. The vacate request occurring at Becker Elementary School, Central Middle School is located twenty-one hundred feet west of the project area. Becker Elementary contains a playground and open space adjacent to the vacate area. Utilities, a tenant sewer main is located just east of Becker Elementary School within the right-of-way. Zone easement will be retained. Downing Avenue to the south contains a thirty-six-inch storm sewer main, and Sager Avenue to the north contains a twelve-inch storm sewer main. The future land use map designates the areas parks and open space, schools, hospitals, government facility, public area and airport. The project will be in compliance with the future land use map. The applicant's requesting to vacate approximately six hundred, six hundred square feet of London Lane right-of-way at twelve thirty-nine Sheldon Street. There's no plating in relation to this request. The technical community did not have any concerns regarding this request. Therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate Limbud Lane right-of-way in the R three Multiple Residence District located at twelve three-nine Sheldon Street be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The area to be vacated is not needed for city right-of-way, and subject to the following condition, that a utility easement be retained over the vacate area.
This is Schrader with staff. So this was a road that never really was, so we're vacating it as a road, retaining an easement because there is a sewer. The easement isn't, just on the vacate part, isn't big enough. So we're also dedicating an easement on the east side of the Becker. And then there's a sanitary sewer in the northwest corner of the school site, not needed. So we're vacating that as well, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Is that all three?
All three staff reports, yep. All three requests, all in a related.
I appreciate you explaining that because I'm a graphic person. I was trying to look at that and figure out what was going on with the words. Wasn't working for me.
Yeah, this is Lystico. So basically, the first two are right next to each other, and then the third one is at the other end of that parking lot of Becker.
Yep, northwest corner of the school, yep.
Do we need to read all three requests, the full requests, or have, have we read enough?
You, you could do one motion that covers all three per staff recommendations.
Yep, just need the one staff report.
So any, any further questions? Any, anyone online or on the phone wishing to speak regarding this issue? Please state your name and address. Doesn't seem like there is, so I guess we'll entertain a motion for the requests. Good luck.
Okay.
Well, should you abstain, though, since this is
That's true. Do you have, do you have quorum then?
Yeah, yeah, we, we just need quorum to be here, so yeah, it's fine if you abstain.
It just has to be documented as an abstention on the vote.
Yep. So we better have.
This is Lystico. I will make a motion to approve the request to vacate Limbud Lane right-of-way in the R three Multiple Residence District located east of twelve thirty-nine Sheldon Street, along with the request to dedicate a thirty-foot utility easement on the east property at Becker Elementary School west of that former Limbud Lane right-of-way in the R three Multiple Residence District. And also vacate a ten-by-seventy-five-foot sanitary sewer easement at Becker Elementary School in the R three Multiple Residence District.
That one's actually R two, but, oh, just kind of a weird split zoning on the site.
Yeah, this, this one says R three.
Should be R two.
But
Doesn't really matter.
And there's no conditions.
Shaffer with the second?
Any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next on the agenda. We were good on the communication thing, Eric, as far as in the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I believe there was just one person, then they were having audio problems. They got it working, and they were here to speak on the request and have spoken, so.
Very good.
Unless there's anyone else online that got missed during the oral presentation section?
And also, I just wanted to acknowledge your abstention to the last.
Yes.
Yep.
Ewing abstained in that last.
Ewing abstained in the last vote.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
This is Schrader with staff. It, it is still being worked on. I left a voice message with the representative from U S Cellular just last week. I have not gotten a call back yet, but the initial indication was that there was some willingness on them to just build a, a free-standing standalone one. But yeah, I haven't heard back from them to finalize details.
Where was that at, Cody?
That would be on the south entrance to the city on
On Texas Street where there's the On the flagpole cell tower.
Any other discussion items?
Was that on this agenda?
No, it was just one of the discussion items under agenda.
Discussion items.
Item four.
Yeah, I do have one other item, Commissioner Lystico again. So last month, we approved a parking lot at Irving Elementary, I believe. And I just wanted to shed light that we should make sure that traffic flow is correct in that area because right now we have a lot of young children maybe darting out into Fifth Street, and that's probably the one thing we want to avoid. So I just say, when we get that going, make sure we get it right so the traffic flow works and everyone stays safe.
It's already a difficult place because of the crossing guards, the turning, the, the backup from Baltimore, all that, so yeah, it's a dangerous place that we need to work on.
And fast traffic.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Lystico. Any other discussion points? I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved, Ewing.
Second, anyone?
Second. Second on the adjournment.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.